We're going to start in just minutes. If you would fill out a card if you want to speak on the participation, public participation. We need a card, please. We'll just get started here. Oh, here we go. Everybody's coming in.
Right behind you, John.
Is this yours?
Thank you.
Whoever went and got it for me, thank you.
Good evening. We're going to start our meeting on September the 22nd. Our city's council special meeting. We are ready to go. Angela, would you do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, everybody. From here. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Hey, our first item on the agenda is public participation. Anybody that wants to speak on anything other than on the agenda. Hearing nothing, we'll bring it back to the dais, close public participation. First item of the public hearings is Resolution 2021-15, adopted in final millage. Mr. Garganese.
Okay, Resolution number 2021-15, resolution of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2021, 2022, on all taxable property located within the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, and providing an effective date. This is a public hearing item. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Angela, you want to start?
Sure.
You have anything?
All right. I definitely support this. I think that we have gone to the rollback level, and I think that's very good. The city is in a good financial position, and I support this ordinance. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Brown?
I support this ordinance. That's all I have.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021, this is approving the, basically, the tax rate, the millage rate, and in the last two or three meetings, I've advocated for basically a half, a quarter, a millage cut that would reduce the budget or the revenues by $300,000. And so my hope was that the council would try to find a way to cut something out of the budget so that we could offer a 1% cut. I shared examples of taking it from one project, shared examples of kind of how that equates, and I don't think that we, we got the desire, but I still don't want to give up on this idea. I think we can do it. And in the last meeting, I shared an example of the Patriots Park that is getting moved to another meeting and, or to another budget year. And I was met with some odd resistance from this council that started to talk about how to make up for that 1% or that $300,000 reduction that a, the millage drop that I recommended would, would cause somehow got translated into, I think I heard it seven times, I went back and listened to the meeting, that I was advocating to, to cut expenses across the board at a 1% cut. And being humble, not having a photographic memory, I was told by Councilmember Brown that this was my opportunity to take it back. And I said, if I said it, well, absolutely. I never gave the, the, you know, I never said one time, to my memory, that I ever wanted an across-the-board line item cut. And, but, but I went ahead and stepped forward and said, sure, well, if I said it, I think I've made it abundantly clear that's not the case. And then it got drilled down to, from the very beginning, almost all seven times, that it included police and fire. And that is nowhere to be found. It, it was stated to me that this millage rate reduction was, was basically going to be balanced out with this police and fire cut. And so my question is to this council, who said, go watch the video for yourself. I had citizens come up to me over the past weeks and say, what's up with this 1% cut? You're wanting to cut police and fire? Thought that was a bit odd, that citizens were saying they watched the video and they come back. We saw citizens on social media that were stating below Councilmember Raymond's, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond's statements, that I absolutely said it. I went and bought a transcript, a verbatim transcript, to make sure that I said it. I watched all three previous meetings that this council was referring to, and really put my character up on the stage. And I still haven't found that statement. I have the verbatim text, I've read it, and I think it's, I wanted to bring this up here because this is misinformation to the public. The council is elected by the people, and I think the people trust their council members to do their due diligence. Those people were told to go watch the video, it's there, they were told, talk to staff, and here we are today. And so I'd like to know, where is this statement that was said seven times and distilled down to police and fire cut? That's, that's the question I have before us. I do not support this millage rate. I think that we can absolutely cut roughly $300,000 reduction, I think it was a quarter or a half mil. And as far as saying we're not going to cut because we're the fourth lowest in the city or the county, you know, when you take on debt, to me, you can create revenue in three ways, big ways. The federal government can print money, well, we can't do that. That's one way. The other way is really you can raise debt or you can raise taxes, and we chose to raise the debt. And I'm not disagreeing with that strategy. I just think that it's clear to say, if you don't raise debt, if you don't raise taxes, then that's something that I think takes, something to be a true cut for the citizens. So that's it. I don't support this. I would hope that the council can clarify and/or please take me to the place where I said that regarding this millage rate cut, and I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to respond, please.
No. Ms. Kellum?
Yes, I just, I would like to see us lower the millage a little bit, if, if it's possible. I've been through, been through this budget and, you know, the comments on the recordings of the last few budget meetings were, you know, Mayor Hoag said it was a good budget, there is, there is fluff in it, and, you know, maybe we can find the 1% in the fluff. And also, you know, we had agreed at the last meeting, the budget workshop meeting, that we would have a, a meeting before the first hearing, another half hour of a workshop, and that didn't happen. I guess we dropped the ball, I dropped the ball, we didn't make a motion. But, you know, another meeting to work through this budget to maybe find the 1% would have been something good for the citizens. You know, we, we go to rollback rate for the last five years, but we've also taken on debt as well. So I would like to see it roll back, so I won't support this millage. Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing more, basically, to, I'd just like to ask one question to the finance director. Our tax millage last year was 3.6, correct? Somewhere 3.6 something?
Yes. 3.6396.
This year's 3.5.
Now it's 3.5755.
We're down below what we were last year.
Yes.
How much have we cut from our last year's budget with, compared to this year's budget and what we're still rolling with the same, with a lower tax rate still? So we're still moving forward with all of our wants that we've been wanting to do.
Right, well, collectively with-
It's a rough, rough idea.
Yeah.
Like $800,000.
Well, collectively with the, let me see, 47.
And then we just take out the, we just take out the enterprise funds out of this because we're talking about ad valorem taxes.
Yeah. So you're looking at, well, you could just look on page 20 of your budget and you'll see the, the difference between, we were 5.1 million, 5.132, that's our new, new rate, and it's, last year it was 4.8. 4.8.
Roll.
And, you know, and you got to look at that, you got to put that in the proper context that, you know, the gross taxable value has went up 8% or whatever it is, which you could find out in your budget book, and so that's why the tax rates went up, but-
I just wanted a kind of a quick scenario of what we're at this year, what we were last year, and how we're doing. I mean, that's, we're not doing it, we're not raising taxes, we're not-
No. When you could consistently-
And doing what we're doing.
When you could consistently move forward, and of course, the amount of tax dollars may be higher coming in, but that's based on the gross taxable value because we went up 8%-
Right, right.
-overall, then, but your rollback, your rate of tax is less than it was last year. You, you know, everything complements itself and goes up, but you're still saying, staying at rollback.
But a 1% cut, like we're hearing, it's like, I mean, yeah, it should be great. 1% of it would apply to just a couple people, but we're talking 10,000 tax people, tax properties, and it's, I, I don't want to say no more, I'm just to the point of where I don't want to talk about it no more.
Yes, this-
Okay, we're going to get into a session where we're not going to have a discussion on what we, I think we're going to be going into. I'll, I'll let you go ahead. Go ahead. I know you want to comment, but I don't want any fire back and forth.
No. My comment is a very simple comment, that when we have the budget and we see that our financial team works on this seven or eight months, it's complicated, it's a lot of work. I applaud them for their work and support them, but the way that I feel about a budget, when I vote for a budget, it's holistic. I vote for everything. And if you vote against the budget, you vote against everything because you are not approving the budget that our staff has worked so hard on. And that's the way that I believe, that budgets are fashioned, and this is what our job is to say, yes, this is a good job, you have always gone through the audit with flying colors, and to say, yes, we support you and the work that you've done, and this is the way that you do it. It's a holistic approach. And that's all I have to say. So when I vote yes, I'm voting for the budget and saying, I'm supporting the staff here. When I vote no, it means that I'm not, and that's the way I feel about it. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion up here? I'm going to go to public comment. Anybody care to comment? Nobody want to comment, so we'll bring it back to the dais for a motion.
I'll move that we approve Resolution number 2021-15, adopting a final millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2021, 2022, on all taxable property located within the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
Will you go to second? I'll second if you don't second. Hold the roll, please. We have a motion by Ms. Raymond, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, excuse me, and Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
All right, we'll move into ordinance number 38, 2021, second reading. Mr. Garganese.
Hey, ordinance number 38-2021, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing, second and final reading for final adoption of the city's next annual budget. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
I'm going to let you start.
Okay. I was wondering if it was possible, and I, I'm not sure how we go about it, but I had talked to Todd and, about speed bumps in Harbor Heights, and they sent me, Jim and, and Todd sent me information. I went around to the residents, and they're really interested in speed humps. I know speed bumps are not allowed by ordinance, but we have a lot of new families in Harbor Heights with little children, and the speed there has really been terrible. I was coming in or going out, and there was a truck coming in, and there was a little child walking with his dad, and the kid almost got ran over. So I think this is something that needs to be done this year, hopefully, if we could squeeze it into the budget. It would be, I think Jim sent me the numbers on, uh, speed humps would be 21,000 each, and we need four, one on each block of Harbor Heights. They had suggested stop signs in the middle of the blocks, but when I talked to the residents, they were like, the people blow through the stop signs that we have, and in the middle of the block, it wouldn't make sense. So I think to, for the safety of the children in Harbor Heights, that this needs to be done sooner than later, and if we could, it would be a total of $84,000. And, you know, if we have money, we have 53.5 in the corner improvement fund and 65,000 in a paving fund. If we could use that for speed bumps in Harbor Heights, that would be awesome.
I had this brought to me probably about a year ago, and I talked to a couple people in there, and I told them, they were far getting speed bumps. And I told them, I said, the best solution would be, other than just me saying this to the council, for somebody there to take the initiative and do a petition, that's what they wanted to do, and they were going to bring a petition. So I'm glad you have gotten aware of it. I have never seen a petition.
Do we need a petition? I mean, I-
Well, I would think that you're going to put something there that's going to affect that whole community, and I don't know, I was just talking to two people.
Right. Well, I talked to-
And I, you know, you've got 80 community people in there or something?
100 and so-
Well, I'm saying, I don't know how many's in there exactly, but I think-
Well, everybody that I talked to, and it was a lot of residents are for it, they, I mean, there's new families on each side of the streets, and they won't let their kids go out and play because of the speed.
I see the little caution signs up there and all that.
Yeah.
And I know two people that have them, and, you know, I told them that, yeah, that's, I don't have a say in it as per se, but when they come here to acknowledge it, or bring a petition, or talk to the directors or somebody to bring it to the city.
So is that part of the process to get-
I don't have a problem with doing them, but I'd just like to hear from more than just two people in the community up there of 100 and whatever it is.
Okay.
If they want to do that, I don't have a problem. I would support it. I'd like to have four or five right in front of my house.
Well, I, when I talked to Commander Walters today, he, he said that he is definitely for it in Harbor Heights because it's a kind of private area, one way in, one way out, and the people rush down there, rush down those streets to get the parking spaces at the beach on the weekends, and it's crazy.
I know. I've actually witnessed it in there, and I've, I, I know we had, like, we've asked several times for the SO to go in there and just run radar.
Right, and they have.
And you'd be surprised, some of the people probably live in there, the ones they'll catch. We've done it before.
Well, so we can't do any of that? We can't get speed bumps until we do all of that other petitions?
Well, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, we can do it at the discretion of the council, if there's the money in there, but I'd like to hear from just one, little bit more than one or two that I heard from, but if it's viable.
I would definitely support it, but Jim, 21,000 for speed bumps, it, how much? It seems awful expensive.
I was going to find out.
I just want to chime in with, Councilmember, is that 21,000 per speed?
Speed bumps are a lot wider than speed bumps.
That's 21,000 per floor.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was each. Well, that's even better.
About 5,500.
In the city code, it actually states that for a speed bump to be a-
It's all, the petition has to be signed by 75% of the residents and presented to council.
Okay.
Let me ask you something, excuse me.
I asked for that two years ago.
Are they asphalt or are they the ones with the plastic?
Asphalt.
Are they asphalt?
Yeah.
And they're like 3 foot long?
12 foot long, 3 inches high in the middle.
And they're tight or, they're kind of wide, aren't they, something?
The whole width of the road.
No, I mean, depth-wise of the, yeah, I'd say that's better than a bump. The humps are good.
Are there other materials besides asphalt that are cheaper that might work?
That's not very expensive, 4,500. Then includes the signage and the striking, too.
Right, that's good.
Because you have to put signage up before, before it says hump, and then you have to have it on the roadway.
And I was, was not told that I needed a petition when we talked about-
It says in the code.
All right.
I asked them two, almost two years ago, I think, or a year and a half ago, to do
that.
Yeah. I, I like the idea of a petition because that, you know, that puts us in a really good position to, to say that you chose this, you wanted this opposed to that.
In our rules.
I've always want, just a crazy, does, does the technology exist to where, similar to Councilmember Brown saying, where you could bolt them down, and if you ever wanted to remove them, you could, where it's not as, you know, are there, is there an application that's?
They have them. They're a lot more expensive.
Are they? Okay.
They're a lot more because they're, have to be traffic rated. And they're going to be noisy when cars go over them because, of course, they're not flat on the asphalt.
I think the, the humps that, they're like three or four foot deep, you know, 12 foot wide, you know, some of those aren't very effective. I mean, the one on McKinley, right, isn't that where it is?
There is one.
Yes, McKinley.
That one doesn't really slow, I mean, you can, you can, it slows you down, but I think with that neighborhood, those ones that are, you know, jarring.
It's a deterrent.
Yeah.
What it's for, it's not actually, because of the height, only three inches, I mean, it's supposed to deter people from going fast.
Maybe we could look into the options that are out there and cost and-
Well, it's good to know that it wasn't $84,000. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I do sense that there is a consensus here on the council, at least an interest in this, and Jim, Jim, what was the approximate total cost again?
21,000.
21,000?
Yes.
For the whole, for four?
Yes.
That would require council approval, it's over $20,000. And the, the petition, Councilmember Kellum hasn't shied away from road projects, being helping out our constituents that way. If there's, since there's, since there's desire there from the council, Councilmember Kellum, if there's something staff can do to help engage the residents of Harbor Heights with social media or something else, we'll be glad to. If there's, unfortunately, there's, well, unfortunately and fortunately, there's not an HOA there. I know there's pros and cons of that whole thing. So the petition might be the way to go. If city staff can help with some sort of an online outreach tool, it'd be a simple matter for us to determine the number of residents or the number of taxpayers or accounts there, and then we can come up with that 70% number if, and we can create a form, if that would help. We're, we're here to assist. I see the, the desire is clearly there from council. We'd be glad to make that a reality. We'll try to find the money somewhere. We've identified a couple potential areas already, so we'll be willing to work with you.
Okay. Will that happen this year?
I would just say after October 1st, we don't want to do anything before then.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, the, the problem down there is, there's so, there's a lot of short-term rentals down there, and they come flying down, they, they don't care about the kids in the streets, you know?
It's scary.
Yeah. All right, thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, some of the points were, were made in the first one, just some, you know, when we, we lowered the taxes to do that, to, to try to figure out, the, the tax rate did lower, but it, in regard to this budget, it's, the revenue's going up, and so people are going to pay some more than others than they did, I think, the previous year, maybe, maybe not, but the, the point is, is that we are taking in more, more revenue, and maybe new construction and things like that impact that, but I think we lowered the rate, but it's not, it's not due to the 8% increase, we're taking in 5.1 million, more than 4.8 million, and so the reserves is a question that I have, like, growing the reserves is, I think that's great, but the amount that's, what is, and I like that the finance director in, in this council, obviously, if the mayor's okay, is, we're at the 20% ordinance, or we comply with the 20% threshold as opposed to the operating budget. Do we, do we like that? Do we think we should increase that? Or do we want to, do we think we should lower that? I, I don't think lowering it is something that I would recommend. I like the, the wisdom in having a reserve to, to fund something that's not reoccurring as I understand it, you know, when, when disaster strikes, I'm proud that our city has a reserve fund like that, but these little projects that we have, you know, I just want to know if we got a half a million extra in there, or whatever it is, you know, should we be looking to the positive impact we could use that money for, what it was designed for to fix some of these immediate problems? I alluded to this in the last time, but even if it's $20,000 to, to do a, a project, so in, in summary, my question is, we got a 20% threshold today, obviously, that's ordinance, but if we like that, let's stay with it, but what do we think about being over? And that was it, Mr. Mayor, if you hear from you or anyone, and I got just a couple more questions, but I don't want to mix it up, so.
Thank you, Phil.
Nothing? Brendan?
I want to make a few comments about the general fund and the enterprise funds. The general fund revenues fund all the departments within the general fund to cover personal, operating, and capital project expenditures. Ad valorem make up an approximate 34% of all general fund revenues. The city also gets revenues for franchise fees from such contracts as FPL, Waste Pro, and the communication services tax, just to name a few. Business tax receipts, water utility tax, and FPL utility tax, state shared revenues, and local half-cent sales tax provide additional revenues. The city also receives additional revenue dollars from leisure services activities and various other revenue streams. All right. Now, the enterprise funds. The wastewater and stormwater funds operate like a private business in that their revenues are acquired by user fees. These user fees fund all wastewater and stormwater, personal, operating, and capital and stormwater, personal, operating, and capital projects expenditures relating to wastewater and stormwater. I just thought that that might be helpful because we just can't mix up the different funds, and this is part of our budgeting process. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can, I'm talking about, I, Council, Mayor Protim Raymond, I fully understand how the funds work. I'm asking about the, the reserves. I get the interdependence, how the fund needs to be self-sustaining. That has nothing to do with, with my question. And I think that this is an example of, there's a narrative here that just keeps getting driven, like Wes is confused on how a budget works. I'm very clear on how money comes in, where it comes in, and where those sources can be used. So, I, I don't understand, my question that the mayor had asked you was about, we got a, we got excessive amount of money in our reserves. Do we, I think we all like that. That's an excellent position to be in, but when we have some immediate needs today, those reserves were designed to be used for certain types of expenses. If we have some of those expenses, if it's $10,000, if it's $1,000 that we can pull from, because out of that reserves, and it, and it provides a positive impact for someone's life, maybe it's flooding, maybe it's something, I've got a list of just little things that citizens came back to me on, it, maybe it's the streetlights, non-reoccurring expenses, then that to me i- is the, is potentially a good idea, especially if our belief is that, actually 17% is excellent. We're at 20%. Well, we're actually closer to probably, I think, 21 or 22%. And so, I'd appreciate if we could talk about that, but just to say, to, to give me a lesson on the budget, I think, this is like the third time I've heard it, I don't know where I've given anyone the impression that I don't understand how the budget works. The only impression that I can think of where you would think that is if you say, I set a 1% across the board cut, and I never said that. Because then it makes sense to me why you're saying that. But that never was stated. And so, I hope we can talk about the reserves and make it crystal clear that I understand how the funds come in and the money goes out, and, and where those funds can be used. So, if, and if there's no comment on the reserves.
Say something on the reserves.
Sir?
John, based on the city's rating, if you cut your reserves from 21 to 20, does that have any impact on the rating that you might get for loans? Because...
No, it does not.
It does not? Okay.
Has no effect. I, I could, if I, if I may add to what Councilmember Morrison's saying, he's basically, he's just really saying this. He's saying, the, now this is for the general fund, so this has nothing to do with enterprise fund and stormwater and whatever. This is a general fund. But what Councilmember Morrison is saying, he's simply stating that it's the city's fiscal policy to have 20%, but we have 21.7%. So, could there be monies used there for something else that maybe like you suggested, Councilman Kellum? And the answer is yes, because these are unassigned funds. So, let's just say that there's $140,000 for, just for discussion purposes, that we could use if we needed to this year from the unobligated general cash fund reserve. And the answer is yes, because our policy says we need 20%. This 21.7% shows, is just another example, it shows how healthy the city's budget is. Okay? So, in answer to your question, Councilman Morrison, yes.
And, and the...
And if you wanted to, and if council ever voted to have their policy be below 20%, that's something you can consider. I could check with the auditors, but it's possible that if, in the future, if it was ever voted on, although I would not advise it because it's nice to have this money, God forbid, but if you went down to 17%, I believe, and I could check, but I believe that would be council's choice if they wanted to change the policy. But at 20%, yeah, we're at 21.4%. Of course. Of course, there's money, money, money there if council so decides. And if we ever got into a, a jam, the city manager has the, has the authority because he wouldn't be in violation of using any dollars above the 20% because he's not violating city fiscal policy.
Right.
So, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
And my, my other que, and if we think that it should be 25%, I'm just using an example, if we think it should be higher, which from what I've learned in our discussions now, then I would say we don't touch a dollar of it. It's more of a, there's a policy discussion, I think, that this can begin for the future. Should we keep it at 20? And I look forward, I like our finance director's idea about talking with the auditors and kind of looking at the horizon and seeing, you know, what we think the market's going to do and what tax is going to do. We may not want to touch it, but, you know, this doesn't have to be a decision for right now, but as these projects are before us, you know, I think our former, former city manager said this, is, it's great to have a bunch of cash, but sometimes it's better to, just cash just sitting there is, is eating away, and, and you're, and you're able to get a better return in other places, like we do, you know, with the low interest or investment accounts. And so, you know, I, I wouldn't say putting that money towards something of low value be good. It, it'd need to be something that I, for me personally, that would provide a substantial impact for us. And I figured starting at the 20% discussion is, is a good place, because then we can identify, if we say it's 18% we want, well, now we can see the total fund. The city manager can look at where he, he feels, and finance director, where they feel we need it, and we, they've obviously heard the areas of our concern. And so, I just see it as an opportunity potentially for us. So, that's, that's helpful. Thank you for explaining.
Let me ask you something, John. That money that's sitting there in that account is being, we're, we're getting money on that money that's sitting there. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I think this past month, if you look at your August, well, we, we just finished August financials, so you'll see that next week. I think, you know, that fluctuates a lot, but I think it's at 2.24%.
Okay.
And last, um, last month, it might have been at 1.8, and the month before that, 1.5, and, um, yeah, so...
Actually, when you, if you take 2% or 4% from that money, you're actually, have less money coming in because you're not getting that 2% of that money.
Well, what you're doing is, is you're, you know, the money that's, that is available to be deposited in all these accounts, and these accounts include all types of impact fees and assigned general fund emergency reserve line, and special revenue funds, police education fund, library fund, all these things. As those sit there, well, this all fluctuates every month on how much you're making on that money. But this money is there in case we need it for, you know, for improvements to, to buildings or whatever we need to use it for. For instance, if, say Gustavo was doing a leisure services project that qualified to use impact fees, then we could use his impact fees to go ahead and fund that, and then that money is pulled out, put in the bank account, given to Gustavo, he spends all the money, and then there's no money left in there. But, but as, but as we build hotels and things like that, we get impact fees from that, and that goes in there. And that's the, you know, it's a revolving system, but the money's there. But it, remember, this money needs to be used based on, its sum is restricted by council. This, there's, there's money in here that's unassigned, which means the council could just say, go ahead and use it. Well, of course, you know, like we just talked, I, it wouldn't be advisable to go under 20%, but if you want to use that 1.4% this year because we get in a situation where we need it, by all means, use it.
Well said. And I think that that's the criteria, is if we say we need it today, then...
Well, how much of, how much money is that, the 1% that we're over the, how much are we talking about?
You know, I'm just doing a, probably could, probably could be near $140,000, 120, 140,000.
Well, couldn't we use that and keep Patriots Park in the...
No, no, now you're, now what you're start, now what you're doing is, this is a planned budget, and these monies are sitting in reserve here, and for, to make that comment now in the final 11th hour, when this is the final budget hearing, that would not be a wise decision. That Patriots Park is not a park, that, that's been already decided, or we've talked about how that's not something that has to be done this year, it could be moved out. When you start taking your reserves and start putting them here and there, you know, that needs to be discussed much earlier in the process.
Okay.
But the speed humps and the solar lights are good examples, right?
Yeah, the speed, but the 21,000, you talk of the speed humps though, if this is sitting in the CRA, Councilman Kellum, you already mentioned about the street corners and the, the sidewalk or the, you know, mobility funds that are sitting in the CRA, and if it's designated that monies won't be spent for those things specifically, those things you're talking about qualify in the same realm on streets, and that money could be used. So, I don't even, I'm not even thinking about pulling reserves here, but what you said was, was correct when you talked to Mr. Moore, and, you know, if that's what we can do, and you got a consensus petition by those folks this year, we can do it.
Okay. Another question, we talked about in the strategic plan, and it was something that we all agreed with, was to put some money in a fund for A1A right-of-way costs or plans to use, I just had it, A1A fund for right-of-way, to help with, to match funds with the FDOT for right-of-way purchases. Would that be something that we could?
Hmm, I, I can't, I can't speak to that because the FDOT, isn't that a whole, I'll have, I'll defer to my city manager because I think those funds, that's a long process, and that would have to be planned out as to when, if we could even do that. So, I, I don't, that's, that's too much of an assumption that I can't even...
Okay. I found it, it says, "Council reached consensus to empower staff to explore state road A1A right-of-way purchasing and funding options."
Yeah, we did look into that with FDOT, and they said the typical way to do that is involve it with a, a grant program. So, we can certainly explore that further. One of the other things I just wanted to mention while we're on this topic, that coming October 5th, we're going to be looking at some design work that FDOT has done on A1A for the, the split and north. And one of the things we should be thinking about, and I think is very worthwhile to get people thinking about, is upgraded streetlights. FPLs, or the FDOT's normal light is the Cobra Head fixture, which we're used to, that's the standard. If we want to make more of a sense of place and arrival and entry point or feature out of it, there's one way we could do it, and that's going to be money that the city would have to spend. Additionally, crosswalks in A1A being the stamped concrete and the red, you know, that, like we do on our streetscapes throughout the city, that's an additional expense that also, I think, makes a, a very unique statement about, this, this is a really nice community. So, those are areas we might look at funding as well.
And I think you and I had spoke about this, instead of going that route, like, it's, it's a somewhat, so when we think about using for A1A, we can think about upgrading. So, FDOT's going to come in with, as an example, these palm trees, right?
Upgraded landscaping, yes.
And we go, no, we want...
Right.
You know, the upgrade, or they're going to do, you know, they're going to meet their minimum, that they think that their budget, they're going to stretch their money as far, and we can push it to that next level for things that we think is important, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they're all on the category of want to haves, I, I get that. And it's FDOT's project, they're going to do it on their timeline and at the minimum level that they're willing to do it. So, we just need to be thinking about possibly putting some money aside for this. We're going to be asking about pricing for these things as we get closer to it. And lastly, I wanted to mention on the topic of increasing the reserves, it's funny that you mentioned this because I recently had a discussion with Zach from his resiliency standpoint, you know? What are your, what are you learning about financial resiliency? Because we're a leader in resiliency, and to me, having more in reserves, that financial resiliency is a strong point as well. So, that could be supporting that initiative.
I have one more question. At the last meeting, we discussed the presidential street pavings, and we were going to wait on that. And then we, we asked for the, a number of the non-presidential streets, such as Surf Drive and those places back there, how much we would need for sidewalks or paving back there. We were going to get a number. Do, do we have that number on?
What I've tasked Jim with doing is, if we look at the entire city's gaps and sidewalks, and we focus on those sidewalk areas where the, where there's a, a need, where people are actually walking in the roadways because there's no sidewalks here, you're going to be able to identify a prioritized list of, we really need these first. And then there're going to be some lower-tier ones, perhaps, like a Surf Drive, where there's just a handful of, you know, residents that walk out there. Maybe that's not as high a priority. So, we're focusing on getting the high-traffic ones done first, and that's what Jim's working on a report for that.
In the non-presidential?
In the non-presidential, yes.
And is there money in the budget for?
Yeah, we've got some mobility money for that. John, can you speak to that amount?
Uh, yes. So, once Jim identifies that, he'd probably have to keep it about, about 65,000, and we'd be able to cover that. Because that's in the budget.
Right. And then there's corner money, too.
That's the CRA money you mentioned, yeah, the 53.5, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
And Harbor Heights is not in the CRA?
If Harbor Heights isn't in the CRA, then you would turn to the general fund, and that could be considered within the paving, in the same category, and could also fall in the category of renewal and replace, which I've talked to Councilman Morrison about, you know, we've been talking about renewal and replace items and what have you. So, there's an option there.
And you know, I looked at the CRA map, and to me, it looks like Oak Lane is in the CRA. Is that right?
Dave, do you recall? Is Oak Lane, is Oak Lane in the CRA?
Oak Lane is in the CRA. There you go. Okay. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
One, one more thing, and you might know, are roads paving fun? I know that it's kind of money in, money out, but what, where do we see our next repaving or whatever the project is for our roads? How much, just guesstimate runway or, or road life do we have left? And should we be allocating some funds towards that, or how are we going to address it? If, I mean, if it's 10 years out, if we start today, it'll pay off?
Yeah. This is a topic that, you know, has been near and dear to my heart since we first met, which went into the thinking of the Presidential Streets Master Plan. There is no comprehensive schedule of, you know, as these assets age, they need to be, you know, renewed and replaced. So, what we've done, unfortunately, and historically, is there's a certain amount of money for roadway improvement projects or repair, or, or for roadways. So, we funded a certain amount there, rather than have a schedule, and that's put us on a, a triage basis. The ones that are worst need it, and we take care of them as the need is there. And I don't know what the numbers are roughly, John, maybe you can come up with some numbers that are available for roadway replacements. And Jim, you might talk about what kind of street conditions we have out there that we know of that need to be replaced.
Yeah, I don't think we have any roadway replacement, well, everybody knows, they've seen the budget. There's nothing that specifically says roadway replacement in the budget. We have things for sidewalks, 65,000, we have 75,000 for paving.
Mobility.
Right, mobility, that's mobility. Right, mobility, that's mobility. So that's what you really look at. But anything in terms of redoing a specific street, we haven't even, um, we haven't even crossed into that.
We've been triaged and I think about Lindsay Court, was that about a year or two ago? It was just getting so bad and we just said, let's just take care of it.
Lindsay Court, International Drive.
Right.
We did it, completely redid International Drive. Uh, yeah, we're making an assessment now of the major streets that need to be repaved. That will be after October before that's completed and not be presented to the city manager at that time.
Yeah, and a lot of what's west of A1A is private roadways that we're not going to be replacing. Um, but those ones, like International, yes, we, we do identify those. We saw the greatest need in the Presidential Streets area and that's helped formulate that whole plan. And, and that, that's really, we're going to, we're going to get that all together under one plan and have this phased plan over the years for the Presidential Streets. Master Plan.
And I, obviously I live on the Presidential Streets and I think we all drive them. They're in pretty good, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of a pothole, you know, that, like you see some of these cities, they got potholes and stuff. I mean, of course, there's little places that can be improved, you're starting to see some cracking and stuff, but I'm just thinking more today, you know, 10 years, and I think the mayor's been through a few re- total repavings in the Ridgewood back in the 20, 2008, I guess, or nine, whenever that was. Um, that was the last big project, but, uh, just trying to say, what, what do you think the next? I guess it would help to know when the, um, Presidential Streets were paved last to give us an idea of when they'll need to be repaved again.
It was in that 2005, 2010 timeframe, I recall.
And did they do all of them?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a, that was a big proj, and how was that funded?
That one was saved up for, for several years.
Okay, so there, there, y'all's style is you, you put money to the side and today we might.
And it was spent, it, it was collected over 20 years, as I recall. This is going back a long time, but I think I remember that council meeting, it was over 20 years. Bob, you might have a clearer memory on that meeting.
I don't remember all the detail, but that was the only time we, we saved every, every nickel for roads.
Yeah, but the, the Presidential Streets Master Plan is by its very nature a phased plan. So if we get it done in 20 years, I'm going to say hallelujah, that's fantastic. So by the time we start 20 years later, we finish, that first one is going to be ready to go again. So it might be 25 years, but it'll stay on a cycle like that. That's part of the master plan.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, almost every city road was repaved, if I'm not mistaken, right, Jeff?
Yeah, it was 16 years ago when I just started.
So we're 16, less than 20 years into these roads. So how, what's the, should we get 30, 40 years if you?
Well, we took a lot of core samples when we, before we paved the roads. Some of them were not constructed very well. I mean, there's soil cement and some places there's no soil cement. So, I mean, the roads, if you want to do it right, you need to do more than just put in new asphalt. It needs a lot of sub base work and base work. So obviously your expense goes way up.
Okay.
And several of the Presidential.
Do you want to do it right? And I, right has a cost, but it sounds like that's what you would recommend.
Well, I mean, just repaving it, it's going to crack again.
Okay.
I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Um, we talked about in the, the master plan too, the enhanced handicap beach access and bathrooms. That's part of the master plan, plan two.
Yeah, I, I asked Dave to make sure that, that was included up to the beach ends. Yeah, so the, the wish list for me would include evaluating for, um, maybe a little shower facility here, maybe a little bathroom facility there. Obviously, it wouldn't make sense on every street.
Right.
Um, and some streets, it could be problematic to have that there. But, um, if it was like every fourth or fifth or sixth street or something, maybe that could work.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things.
Go ahead, let's get it finished up.
Okay, I, I just wanted to talk about, um, the, the budget and, uh, the CRA and, you know, I'm learning a lot more about the CRA, um, and I know there's not a lot of money left over in those funds for the things that the CRA was originally funded for, um, like, encourage private investment and redevelopment, um, the rehabilitation, conservation and redevelopment of deteriorated distressed areas, um, you know, property improvements, helping, uh, property owners and businesses. This is what I was hoping that we would focus some of the CRA money on and it seems like, you know, it's tied up with these bigger projects when a lot of other things could be used. But then I was reading about the, um, American Recovery Act and in that it says that we can address, um, worker, assistant, household nutrition, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, small business assistance. So hopefully, has that money showed up yet or?
Yeah, and what I can address on that is, um, I, I want to say it's 2.6 that we've gotten.
2.6 million we received and it is, it is in the bank.
And what we're proposing for council, just so you know what's in our heads, um, 90% of that would be for stormwater and/or wastewater, but another, the 10% of it ideally, we think should be for qualified community needs that we haven't yet specified. And we can, we'll have some discussions about that. And as far as the CRA goes, um, when it was created by the state legislature, all of those things were part of it with those individual assistance grants. But the, so much has changed in the, the local county and state philosophies about CRAs. And, um, that was the, the individual grant part of CRAs where you help out this business or that homeowner, uh, became such a sore spot with Brevard County because people were upset that you granted my neighbor that money, but you wouldn't grant me that money. And CRAs were in that, in the crosshairs for picking winners and losers. And the county, when they approached us, they said, and, and all of the CRAs in Brevard County said, we really want to look at limitations to your CRAs and we want to limit you everywhere we can. And that was the number one catalyst that was driving this, those individual grants. And we probably did it fairer better than any CRA in Brevard County in terms of how you went through that county gauntlet a couple of years ago because all they did for us was they reduced our length from 2042 to 2040. And other cities were getting a lot more restrictions put on them than we were, but the reason we weren't, and you can call Commissioner Loebre and he'll tell you the same thing, was because we've been a poster child for not doing those things with our CRA. What we've used our CRA for was for larger infrastructural projects that serve the entire CRA area. There's no individual winners and losers being picked there. So we have to be careful if we talk about going against that new philosophy because I certainly know we would be getting the county's attention if we started going further in that direction. That's why it's a safer bet for us to do these infrastructural projects, these properties that are, you know, key strategic properties for the city or the lift station six rehab and these other things that we've done with it. And also I wanted to mention about the CRAs, that, that TIF money continues to grow as long as our economy grows. It's grown so much since our base year of 2012, I, I don't even know how much it's at right now.
943,000 this year.
It's, the first year was at 100,000.
County gives us.
Hundred and something thousand, that's how much it's grown in, in nine years. It's going to continue to grow until we reach maturity. So as we reach that point where we're using all the available CRA funds right now, well, that's today. Next year, there's more opened up that we can do some cool things with and next year there's more. And also the things that we've indebted the CRA with, those low interest, short-term loans will come paid off and that will open up even more. So the CRA is here for us for a long time and it's just a godsend for the city of Cape Canaveral. We did it at the right time, we did it in the right area and it's going to serve us well until 2040.
Um, and then one other thing, it said in here that the, um, the American, uh, Fund, Rehabilitation Fund or whatever it's called is, could provide premium pay for essential workers. I would be for giving our first responders a, a bonus or something. When they did a lot of the vaccines and all that, um, they went above and beyond during the pandemic.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, Mickey, yes, we've already, we've already addressed that the fire department, uh, they're a private organization and specifically says in what you're looking at that document, if you're looking at the document, we've looked at, they've been sent by the state, is the, uh, private, uh, private company with the premium pay for those employees, that is, that is, uh, reimbursable through the, the Rescue Act. So I've already, uh, got with the fire department and they've incurred $16,000 for what, exactly what you're talking about with the COVID. And, um, as we move forward and, and the city manager, uh, gives the plan to council to show what staff will work on in terms of the project, that $16,000 will be reimbursed to the fire department for that premium, that premium pay. Yes, that qualifies. And if that happens again during this period and we have to do that with, with the, uh, the fire department, God forbid, we have to do all that again, but if we do, then that will be covered.
Okay.
Part of, um, our plan is when, when we get to this center street project, how we're going to fund whatever this comes up with. I think those ARPA funds are going to, we're going to be looking very seriously towards those for that. Another thing is we've got the, our deep well injection study and that's going to be costly. And we think those ARPA funds might go where, and the nice thing about it, that just ties directly into what they were intended to do. So when I say we're thinking about 90% for those projects, this is the type of project I'm thinking about doing. We don't want to have any problems under scrutiny for this ARPA money. So those are very clean projects, the money's got to come from somewhere. But it's also important to us that we talk about a, a certain percentage available for these community needs and we, we definitely need to continue that conversation about those qualified community needs.
Okay, that's all I have.
Come back one time, Mr. Morrison, you got anything else?
No, I just want to be, thank you for talking through it overall because I'm not going to, I think, talk again is the budget, I do think we can cut, I know I've said this and so I, I shifted away from that and I started talking about things in the future and, and just trying to plant the seed for this year. And so that's it is, um, I, I think I've made my point clear, thank you.
Bro, you got?
I think I want to thank staff for all the work they've done in this budget. This is an excellent budget. Um, you can always find a dime here and a dime there that maybe you can cut, but I think overall, um, we're looking at something that citizens of Cape Canaveral can be proud of. Thank you.
Fred?
I already said it, thank you very much to the financial staff and the entire staff of the city of Cape Canaveral. And I totally support this fiscal year 2020, 2022 budget. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add other than thank staff and John, you guys, your department. Uh, public, do you have anything you want to do or say? So public, so we'll come back to the diaphragm, the motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 38 dash 2021.
The second?
My second.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Angela Raymond to the second by Councilmember Brown for ordinance 38 2021, but the second reading, call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tem Raymond?
Four.
That concludes our agenda and staff, did you?
I just wanted to thank John DeLeo for his personal integrity and getting us through this, another great budget and your, your team is just dynamite. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do, I definitely, kudos to the team. We have an outstanding financial staff that's very impressive. The city's very fortunate, uh, for Cheryl, Donna, Jenny and Candace. It's, we're blessed, I'm blessed to have them. But thank, and thanks to all my fellow directors and staff who give tremendous input and support, so, thanks.
Thanks, John. Okay, anybody? Adhere. Don't pick on Gustavo next time so hard.
Gustavo's going to use this.